Good evening, thank you for coming. I'm going to open our school committee meeting for October 27th. If you could stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will have introduction of members.
Ted Novio, Millville.
Dan Keith, Blackstone.
Erin Vinoco, Millville.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
And Erin Zimmerman, Millville.
And we have a member attending through phone, Tammy.
Tammy Lemieux-Blackstone.
Our student rep.
Ashley Johnson, Blackstone.
Deidre Farrell, interim school business official.
Jason DeFalco, superintendent.
Thank you very much. And thank you everyone for being here tonight. I will honestly say, I don't think I've seen the room this full ever. But definitely not close to this for a very long time. And it's usually over money issues, so it's good to have everyone here for good news tonight. We're going to start with our student rep update from BMR.
I'd love to.
Thank you.
So we're very sorry we missed the last meeting. Unfortunately Kylie can't make it because she has a volleyball tournament game right now. Since our last update, here are some things that have been going on at our high school. So for homecoming weekend, all of our sports teams won their games. On Saturday, September 24th, the band also won their home show. The dance was on the 23rd. Because the weather on that Friday evening was a little chilly, we had an indoor/outdoor dance where the DJ dance floor was outside and the cafeteria was open with tables and food for guests to warm up. On Friday, the 21st, student council had a spirit day for National Crocs Day. This allowed our students and staff to connect with their styles, types of crocs, and have fun. BMR varsity volleyball and field hockey are in the Central Mass tournaments this week. We wish all of our student athletes best of luck. Both first games were on this past Tuesday, volleyball against Sutton and field hockey against Notre Dame Academy. BMR volleyball has moved on to the semifinals that are tonight against Douglas. The finals are on this Saturday at Grafton at New. BMR soccer is in their playoff but have decided to opt out of the CD AMA Tournament, Central Mass Tournament. Soccer, volleyball, and field hockey all had their senior games the past week. At the volleyball game, both Charlie the Charger and Blaze showed their support. Seniors are hosting an after-school nitroball tournament on Thursday, November 10th at the high school. Band has New England State Championships this Saturday and NSBA finals on Sunday before their last weekend of the season, National Championships on November 5th. This upcoming Monday, 10:31 Halloween, seniors will have their annual costume parade to further senior class to have a healthy competition who has the most creative costume in the grade. Teachers will also dress up to show their Halloween spirit. NHS has had weekly meetings and set up many volunteer opportunities for the students and for the help to get, and for the community to get help. All clubs have had multiple meetings. The Drama Club announced their fall play, Almost Maine. Last Thursday, the junior class had multiple magicians perform at BMR for a fundraiser and for the class events. As we ease into November, the student council is planning more spirit days such as Pinkout Day this past Wednesday. An upcoming annual Padda Puff game, admin even has some fun advisories planned for the next few weeks. So many upcoming events for the high school to get excited about.
Everyone get all that? That was a lot, but we really appreciate it. Lots of exciting things happening at BMR and in our communities, even at the elementary levels. I know there were the trunk or treats in the last week and the Halls of Ween combined. But best of luck to all of our sports teams that are in it right now, the band who has a huge weekend coming up, and then Nationals the week after. Any questions for Ashley tonight? Anything else to add?
Um, that's all.
You gotta get back to call it to band.
Yes, I wish best of luck to all of our athletes and band members as well. Very excited this weekend.
Alright, thank you so much, and you are free to go if you...
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, and next on the agenda, we have consent agenda A, just warrants. Looking for a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made by Dan, second by Tara. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. And then we're going to move to our school committee items. We'll circle back to public forum, which we have student recognition for MCAS. I believe the majority of you are here for that. So we will go right into that, because I know some kids have other commitments.
Absolutely. So, good evening, everybody, and welcome. We are so excited you're here. This is one of our favorite meetings each year, because we have an opportunity to honor, yes, children, we said honor, our scholars in the room who have worked so hard and continue their hard work this year. But what we are going to do this evening is recognize them for their hard work last year on their MCAS. And so, we're gonna, if you want to come around to the front here, we're gonna actually ask, we're gonna start with the high school. We're gonna ask Ms. Robarche, and I think Mr. Rowe, you're gonna be the dynamic duo tonight and help us with the high school certificates. Ms. Fowler, our principal of the high school, is attending to a family mass, she's not here. But just so everyone in the room is aware of what all of our students are being recognized and honored for tonight, these are our highest performing students in the district on the MCAS assessment. These are students who achieved exceeding expectations. So went well beyond what the grade level expectations are, either in English, or math, or science, and in some cases, all of them, which is really quite remarkable. And before we acknowledge the students, we have some very other, some other people that are very important, very special here. Teachers, can you just kind of wave? Because we've got teacher strap-ons right here. Our brilliant scholars wouldn't be where they are without the leadership from their classroom teachers and parents. A huge thank you to all of you for all of your love and support in nurturing these fine young students as they move along through each grade. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Robarche and to Mr. Rowe, who are gonna announce our high school recipients. And then students, if you want to come up and get your certificate, you can shake some hands, and we can do pictures at the end of each grade.
Alright, our first recipient is Kalani Chu.
Next up, we have Beck Jenkins.
Next, we have Dominique Delusha. And Manny Hebert.
I think the high school kids are all at home studying. Alright, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
You have a bar.
And next up, we are going to acknowledge our middle school students. Now remember, some of these friends are now in high school, right? Because they transitioned. So these are our last year's results. And Ms. Cattila, our principal of our middle school, is here tonight to award the certificates. So students, if you want to come up?
Start working your way to the front. There's no clear path.
Seth Asante. Seth gets all the points.
Good job.
Joseph Lafayette. Clover Maloney. Nicholas Thrall.
Have a one more round of applause for our middle school. And last but certainly not least, our elementary students, Dr. Brimka. I don't know if you want to bring our, any staff down with you?
They're all coming.
So many of our fabulous staff here.
She can't make it, so she, I make sure she makes it.
Do you want to have the staff?
Yeah, so when I, so when I call the student's name...
They're alpha, so you're gonna call them.
Staff, I would like last year and this year, teacher to come up, okay? Gabby Asante.
They need to turn around. It's gonna be a while.
Kama Atia.
No, she's here.
Gonna just be awhile.
Congratulations.
Mason, go to your teacher. Genevieve Bovier.
Genevieve, yay! Oh my goodness! Genevieve, I'm so proud! Yay!
Dr. Falcos, photo file.
We'll see you later.
No, it's okay.
Lucy Poirier, two. Kyle Quinn. Grace and Coplin.
You don't have to keep on... I don't want to name the picture.
Oh, oh. All those did wrong.
They look at me so proud.
Connor Evans.
Oh, yay Connor! Nice job! In the middle. Good job Connor.
Benjamin Gilligan.
I love it!
You can do, good job Max!
Nicholas Gilligan!
I love the smile Nick.
Montana Higginsey, two.
Montana! Montana! Oh, come on Kane. That's it. Nice. Nice.
Angelina Harvey. All right, Bieber! Liam Lamar.
Mrs. Falcos gave it to you. There you go. Good rounds. Now you gotta look this way. You want your, yup, there we go. Nice. Good job.
Corey Livingston. Corey! Corey, take it. Hudson McLoughlin. Great pictures. And this one can stop talking now. Anthony Paurella.
Aw, he had the name!
Christopher Perrin. Christopher Perrin.
This way, this way.
Alright, alright. Alright, one more, one more. Ah, I was gonna give you all night. Jennifer. Oh, she got two! She got two! Wait, give me that one!
Nice.
Alright, I'll give it to Julian. Daniel Saunders.
Nice job! Daniel. Come get in there!
Ashley Shenna.
Amy getting in there too?
I didn't know we were supposed to.
Yeah, I pay attention. That's right. Kennedy Sellers. Steven Simmons, two.
Oh wow, nice job!
Alright, Betty Stapleton, two.
Just one? Anyone?
Riley Studley. Alright, that's it, sorry.
Congratulations to our elementary school. To our Charger scholars, this is just the first step, right? We gotta keep working, we gotta go deeper, we gotta work harder, keep learning, keep focused. We're so proud of you, doing great work. Parents, thank you so much for coming this evening to honor, help us honor and celebrate our youngsters. And again, a big congratulations to everybody. Thank you so much.
This would not be a good sign, we do this.
Really?
This is definitely a problem. It's a surprise. And go, oh! They would just...
Happens.
They would be memorable.
They're king of the hour. We'll just hold it.
Afraid of that.
Oh, it's so great!
Yep, we have, we have presenting. Yep, we could, that's why.
So when you're in a district to see your...
Alright, so I think we're going to, the, next on the agenda is policy manual section. Tammy is with us, but she's on the phone. She would normally present that, so actually what I'd like is to move that maybe to our next agenda, so we'll hold it tonight. And she'll present it when she's here in November. I'm pushing the policy review.
Yeah, she's gonna push the policy.
We're gonna move the school improvement plans up. So next up, we'll have report of superintendent.
She's got a good job.
And actually, I'll hand that over to you, Jason, for report of superintendent. But if we wanted to do our school improvement plans first?
Sure. Yeah, we're happy, happy to do that. Alright, good evening, everybody. We're gonna get rolling with the next piece of our agenda. And I'm just speaking loudly, so those at home can hear through the background noise of the elementary staff in the back of the room. The excitement is real. And I know we have a member, a school committee member on the phone. So, we are going to start with our high school, school improvement plan. Mr. Rowe, are you still, Mr. Rowe should still be here, Ms. Robarche?
Oh.
Mr. Rowe and Ms. Robarche. They are here.
Alright, so let's start with...
Maybe check the corridors, see if they're in the...
I'll see if I can find them.
Thank you. Then we'll get started with the middle school.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
Right. I'm trying to screen. We have to put the middle school up now. Yeah, sorry. Change?
So much excitement, it's all good.
Good stuff.
Do we, we run the slides? Is that what this is?
Yup, and we're gonna get the...
Slide deck.
Thank you, up in a moment.
If you want to reference any of the data, that's there.
Perfect, okay.
Alrighty.
Ready to roll?
We're ready!
Yes, thank you, Ms. Cattila, for being here, and to Ms. Studka, our coach.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you for having us. So, yeah, do you wanna, yeah. I don't intend to spend too much time going over the data. I feel like you're probably pretty familiar with it at this point. You've seen our MCAS scores. It's no secret that we have a lot of work to do. I don't think you'll let, you're likely to have seen our STAR data, that's our internal measure. That's our internal measure. What's listed there, it says M and PM, which stands for meets and partially meets. That's inaccurate. That's our meets and exceeds numbers. I apologize for that. I made the edit after the deadline for editing had passed. So we have... Our sixth grade is coming in strong for STAR data, but our seventh and eighth continue to pose some challenges for us. And of course, the challenge is to keep our sixth graders growing. So the other piece that I'm taking into consideration when looking at ways to work on school improvement is time on learning. The current schedule has two periods a day. One is a directed study that doesn't have any specific learning outcomes attached to it. And the other one is a GEM period that has some learning outcomes attached to it, but some of them aren't super well-defined. So I wanted to take a look at how we can better use our time during the school day to meet our academic objectives. And that leads us right into our goals. So Ms. Studka is going to talk to us about the curriculum goals.
So we'll be implementing the new math curriculum, the Intermath curriculum. We will be continuing with some small group skill-based intervention in math and ELA and participating in the social studies curriculum review this year and engaging our boys in trying to encourage them to read more through a few initiatives, both some after-school initiatives with families and in-school through a literacy class where we are looking to match up students to role models to really encourage boys to be active readers. And in terms of providing support and instruction, we're increasing our opportunities for writing within the classroom. So we're supplementing what is within the programs that we're using. We are clarifying the writing rubric that we'll be using to assess the growth and progress of students across the curriculum and targeted writing instruction that will really focus on students' ability to explain their reasoning and find their voice and use their voice in their writing.
Do you wanna... You wanna do that one, and then I'll do the other two?
Yep.
Okay, so moving on to the instructional goals. How we plan to implement... We have the curriculum, now we're talking about the how.
And that is through the, again, implementation of our new math program, Intermath, and supporting that implementation through training, not just with the coach, but also through PLC times so that as a group of educators, math educators, they can talk about the best way to implement the new program, the resources within the program, and things along that line. Progress monitoring as well allows for adjustments through the intervention.
When it comes to writing, we're going to be... We're going to be identifying some evidence-based strategies, such as quick writes and student feedback to improve student writing. But we're not limiting ourselves just to those two ideas. So our instructional leadership team will be identifying the strategies to match with the students at the appropriate time, at the appropriate grade level, in the appropriate class. Again, looking at that rubric, the MCAS rubric, isn't super clear on what moves a child from one level to another. So we are going to look at that, and we are going to clarify the language so our students know exactly what is expected of them, and they know what to shoot for. And when we know that and they know that, we can target our instruction around those things and give them more opportunities to write on demand. One of my theories is that they're lacking in stamina for that, for those writing, you know, when they have to sit down and do the writing, they're lacking the stamina to do that. So we just need to build... It's like a sport, you know? You practice, you build the stamina to do it. And then focusing on meaningful, actionable feedback. The teacher taking the time to make the meaningful feedback and giving the child the opportunity to read it and make sense of it. That's writing. And then when it comes to the schedule, we are very soon going to be implementing some schedule adjustments. Those adjustments are going to capitalize on the time on learning in the current structure of the day. We're not changing, you know, any times within the day, but directed study will be gone. Directed study will be used for a literacy class instead. And that literacy class is going to expose our students to high-quality, middle-grade, high-interest books that will get them reading and build their identity as readers. And it will give us some opportunities, too, to match those role model staff with our boys so they see men reading and they have an opportunity to read with other boys titles that are geared towards them. We are... Okay, hang on a second, let me refocus on... I start talking about books and I lose my train of thought. So the other things that we're doing with our scheduling adjustments, we're looking at more intervention times. We're looking at opportunities to meet students where they are and fill some gaps. Once that adjusted schedule takes place, once quarter two starts and the kids move into that adjusted schedule, we're going to start studying, put together some volunteers, and study middle school schedules. We'll look at schools with populations similar to our own. We'll look at schedules that they run. And we'll identify a schedule that will meet our academic needs, the social-emotional needs of our kids. Find a schedule that works. And hopefully, by the fourth quarter, we'll have a schedule identified. We can share it out with the community, and we'll be ready to go for planning for over the summer and get us going next year with a brand-new schedule. So that's the goal. For the whole child, we are going to continue implementing our Choose Love and Second Step curriculums. Those are our social-emotional curriculums. We are always looking for new and engaging extracurricular activities. And we have some new staff this year that are coming with some really wonderful ideas. One of our social studies teachers is doing a filmmaking club that the kids are really engaged in. So we're anticipating ongoing different opportunities for kids. We are... So BBST stands for the Building-Based Support Team. And every school in Blackstone-Milville Regional School District has a BBST. But I feel like we could recommit to that here. We need to have our staff better own the process, better able to articulate the process, follow the process. So we're gonna spend some time this year recommitting to that. And I have just started working with a small group of eighth grade. I'm calling them my PAC, my Principal's Advisory Committee Council, Principal's Advisory Council. And they are going to work on identifying the middle school version of the Portrait of a Graduate. So we have the high school Portrait of a Graduate. We have the elementary Portrait of a Graduate. These students are going to look and see what do those five Cs look like at the middle level. The staff has all had an opportunity to look at it in both some committee work and in our PLCs. But really, the kids know best what this looks like in middle school and what to shoot for. So we're gonna give them that opportunity to be leaders. They'll come up with the Middle School Portrait of a Graduate. They'll identify how best to share it with their peers, give their peers an opportunity to interact with it, and share it out with the community. So I'm super excited about that. In terms of our fourth goal with the community, we will be participating in the District Community Outreach and Public Relations Team. We are exploring some ideas for how we can get our middle school students involved in the community at large. So things like partnering with the Blackstone Public Library or the Milville Public Library to give our students greater access to books outside of this wonderful library. Looking at things like, can we get our students into senior centers or senior living areas to bridge that generational gap? Our kids know a lot about technology. We could probably be pretty helpful there. And I bet they have a ton of skills that they can teach our kids. And I just love it when we get generations together. So we're looking at some things like that. And as we continue working on some things that Jill's gonna talk about in a moment, our staff will be engaging in culturally responsive educational practices to make sure that the things that we do in school give students a way to see themselves in this building. Their world, their cultures, need to be reflected here so they know that they belong. And we're going to be making some efforts along those lines.
And for professional development, our math team will continue to receive professional development, excuse me, in the Intermath program and WAGL, both through HMH and within PLC times. So that will be ongoing throughout the year in terms of taking that time in PLCs to discuss the program and how it's being implemented and doing that with fidelity. We're continuing our work with diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging with a partnership with the Anti-Defamation League that's going to be doing training with the entire staff, as well as continuing our work with a consultant group that has been working with the leadership team. We are bringing that one step deeper into the middle school with training and working with our ILT team. So that will be happening this year. And then we'll be partnering with our EL teachers to bring strategies for SEI, for our English language learners, during PLC times. So they'll be introduced, not introduced, but reminded and given additional strategies to help work with those students so that they can progress.
That is the end of the slides, but what questions can we answer?
I'll start.
Okay.
I don't know if you can back those up, but...
Sure, yeah.
I will say you had me a little confused at first, but then I understood it. On the slide with the schedule...
Yes.
Yep. There you go. So schedules study in quarters two and three. And I'm like, I thought she just said we're getting away from that. So I wasn't looking at studying the schedule.
Correct. Poor choice of words. I will...
It's me, it's okay.
I and volunteers will be studying...
I get it.
Scheduling options. We are not putting a study in the schedule.
So the study, the directive study is going to become literacy.
Correct.
That's first period for every grade across the board.
It won't be first period, but it... The order of classes might shift a little bit, but students will be taking literacy in place of. With the exception of eighth grade, eighth grade will be taking Spanish. So Spanish is moving to the eighth grade as one of their core rotational classes.
Okay. And the new bell schedule will not start until next September?
Correct. The bell schedule will remain the same. We're living within the existing bell schedule. You can only change... We're making massive changes now. So we're... I know, we just have to live with the existing bell schedule a little bit longer.
Okay. All right. What other questions do we have for our middle school tonight?
I have a few questions, but I have to move.
Okay.
Okay.
She has to move to a quieter spot.
Oh, okay.
So one of my questions, one of my comments first, is as a community partner, considering pairing with Parks and Recs as well.
That would be great.
They often have some good events that maybe middle schoolers could volunteer and kind of help guide elementary folks, so that was just a comment.
Okay, thank you, I love that idea.
And with more intervention time, what will the students who are meeting and exceeding standards at this point be doing during that time?
So the... We're targeting our intervention for students who are on the cusp. We have sort of two different intervention groups. The students who are in like the warning level and the students who are on the cusp. The students who are meeting or exceeding will be continuing in literacy classes full-time. The students who need the intervention will be getting literacy half-time. So we have carefully chosen books, carefully chosen groups so that the students who are in the class fewer days will still be able to read and engage with literature in meaningful ways. And the students who are in the class full-time will be doing the same thing, just with different texts, probably. To put it simply, longer texts.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, I'm sorry, one final question. With respect to the schedule changes, teachers have been involved in that conversation, correct?
They have been, yes. So we've... I think I shared the draft schedule with staff two weeks ago. The staff was involved in... We had volunteer committees. We called them our redesign committees. So they started working with me very early on. And then we got to a point where we had to turn it over to a certain, to our scheduling gurus in the building. And so they have a schedule that they are continuously updating and sharing with staff.
Okay, thank you. I know they like to be part of that, so I just wanted to make sure that was how it is happening.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
And any changes that we make for next year, they'll have complete... They'll be invited to be a whole part of.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have questions for middle school improvement? All right.
Okay.
Do we want to approve these separately or all this one? Anyone have a preference? Middle school improvement, does that mess anything?
Nope, not at all.
Okay, so motion made by Dan to approve the middle school school improvement plan as presented this evening. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Dan, second by Tammy. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Densions? That's unanimous, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's a lot of work ahead of you, but I appreciate it.
But now we can get started.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary, thanks Jill.
Thank you.
Next, Ethan Rowe and Hillary Robarge are gonna join us to review the high school's improvement plan. So Tam, if we could get that back. There we are, thank you. The dynamic duo here tonight. Thank you so much for being here.
Sorry that we stepped out. We were trying to get out of the way there.
Move your feet, lose your seat. We're glad you're here.
Okay. Let's see if we can run this. So for anybody that doesn't know me, I'm Ethan Rowe. I'm the content leader for math at the high school.
I am Hillary Robarge, and I'm the content leader for English at the high school.
So we're sitting in for our fearless leader tonight. And we... Our plan was developed by our ILT at the high school. So, you know, we meet twice a month on Wednesday afternoons. And we've spent a lot of time in the first two months of school talking about, I guess, where to begin and where we should go from there. So our findings, really, we're basing a lot of our thoughts on our Portrait of a Graduate that was developed over the last year and I would say revised over the last year. We're in year two of trying to implement, or I should say implementing, the ACE strategy in all of our classes or in all of our departments, where we're really trying to get students to focus on not just answering, but supporting and explaining. It's funny, as we sat back there and listened to the middle school, I think we're working on a lot of the same skills, just at the next level. In our common departmental learning goals, basically each department, as a group in our PLCs, has developed goals that talk about how we can... How we can align, I guess, our teaching to what we want our students to learn. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later. And then career and college programming, basically, you know, how can we get more opportunities for our kids, expose them to more throughout the year so that they have a better awareness of what's out there in the world? Yeah, I think that's it for that slide.
So for the what, a lot of this has to... We always talk like all means all. And I think that's really still gonna be a focus for us at the high school. How are we meeting the needs? Still focusing on critical thinking and problem-solving skills, but how are we meeting the needs of all of our students? Not just, you know, those meeting or exceeding kids, but also our L students, also our special needs students. So finding ways to do that through all these different curriculums that we're implementing. So for English, we use study... So for English, we use StudySync as our main core curriculum. Math is using a program.
Savvas?
Savvas.
Savvas. Our social studies department is working on their curriculum this year. We now have the biomedical, so pathways in science with the biomedical, engineering, Project Lead the Way, giving our students all these different opportunities in the classroom to kind of explore, and we're going to introduce, or hoping to introduce, I think this year, a more comprehensive computer science program. What else am I missing? And then within our PLCs throughout the year, we're really focusing on how can we strengthen these things? So I know personally, within English, we're always looking at how can we use this StudySync curriculum to, one, improve our students' writing in particular is always a focus. We talked about ACE on that last slide, and that's still a focus for us this year, but how are we using and looking at student work, and where are they, where are they strong? Where do we need to focus more of our attention in the classroom, using these different curriculums that we have?
And one thing I'd follow up with that, in, I think, most of our PLCs, we've started bringing student work and doing sort of a blind reading of student work and sort of trying to align how everyone grades and, and criteria for grading and evaluating student work. So that's part of that process. Under the how, I kind of mentioned this earlier, but one of the things I know we're doing in the math department, I think in other departments, is one of our goals is to implement new strategies, station rotations, other evidence-based strategies that help us just engage students in the learning more. So sometimes it's using technology, sometimes it's using station rotation, just a variety of, of options, and then taking the time in our PLCs to reflect on what's working and what's not working. We're looking at clarifying our pillars in the Portrait of a Graduate to make them more like can-do action statements in user-friendly language, so the students actually relate to them and understand the Portrait of a Graduate. So there's been some discussion about that. And then just using our PLC time to collaborate and strengthen instruction by seeing how it's impacting our student learning.
And I think, so, and like going along with the interactive strategies, like Ethan said, we're really, all of the departments, as far as I'm concerned, are in some way, shape, or form, trying to incorporate more of these interactive strategies, so the teachers then become more of the facilitators, and the students are the one actually doing the work in the classroom. They're engaged. So even in English, when you're thinking of, okay, we're sitting, we're reading a text, we're finding more engaging ways for them to be involved, up and moving. That way, you know, the students who were, English might not be their favorite subject, we're getting them involved, engaged in whatever it is that we're doing. We're finding ways to reach those kids that maybe wouldn't have been reached if they were just sitting there reading a book. All right, so for the whole child, so maintain a culture that promotes positive relationships. Our advisory program is now like up and running really for this year. We had one last week. We're having another one tomorrow. Tomorrow's a competitive one. We're actually carving pumpkins, having a pumpkin carving contest with all the different advisory programs, so wish us luck on that. But it's really going to be this way to, our students are going to all be together throughout, you know, every week, and they're going to have different programs. Some of them are going to be more conversational, whereas last week, we talked a lot about empathy and understanding what empathy is and the importance of that, whereas other, it's going to be more community building, like we have tomorrow with the pumpkin carving. We also are using the ADL programming, which is it going to include mentoring, not just for our teachers, but we're going to have students involved in that as well, and then our students are going to become the leaders in our ninth and 10th grade advisory programs, where they're actually going to become the teachers. So our seniors in particular are going to be in with our ninth and 10th graders and really building that community, so it's not this separation between, oh, we have freshmen and we have seniors, they're separated. We want to build one whole community to make everyone feel really welcome.
And we actually rolled that out last week in advisory, and I think it was pretty good feedback on, on that aspect of it. In terms of the community, one of the things we talked about a lot is obviously this Portrait of a Graduate has been driving our conversations at the high school, but it's sort of like, how much does our community know about the Portrait of a Graduate, and what are some ways that we can get it out there more? We've talked a lot about, again, how we can connect to the community and how we can get businesses not only to come visit school, but to get our, our students to come out into the community. So two things that I know are going to happen this year, one is we have a job fair that's being planned. There are some people from Amazon that are planning to come and do some activities with the kids, but also, as we have done in the past, I would say pre-COVID, we're going to try to have a number of people from all kinds of walks of life come. The format of it isn't set up yet, but what we've done in the past is in the cafeteria, you know, the kids can kind of come around and talk to, you know, plumbers, vets, police officers, firemen, anybody and everybody that's willing to come and, and talk with our kids. And so that's one thing that's kind of in the works. Another thing that's in the works is a plan in the spring, I believe, where juniors and seniors will be able to visit three different colleges in one day, so they'll go to a community college, a public four-year college, and a private four-year college, and that'll be like a field trip that they obviously, is optional, but I think a great experience for them to like get out and see three different college environments.
All in one day?
That's the plan. That's what I heard.
Good luck to those babarons.
Doing a few college tours recently, that's a lot.
Did I miss anything there?
Like the middle school, I'd also mention like the district public relations team, that's something we're also getting on board with. In every week that Jill's been sending out her newsletter, there's, you know, pictures of what these kids are doing with Portrait of a Graduate. There's tons of collaboration happening in all of our classes, so we make sure that we're kind of capturing those moments to really show the work that we're doing. And then, like Ethan had mentioned, finding those connections with our community, and I know one thing that we had talked about at our last ILT meeting was Good Stuff Smokehouse has done so much. We have probably a fundraiser at Good Stuff once a month as a minimum, so maybe trying to like return that favor, you know, as students, what can we now do to help Good Stuff? Can the kids go and roll silverware? Can they go and, you know, clean up after an event? So finding ways that we can also return those favors for some of the businesses in our community that have really helped our school. And, oh, you go.
Was it me? In terms of professional development, one of the things we've done, I think a lot more effectively this year, is use our faculty meetings as workshops. So after we take care of five or 10 minutes of sort of like, you know, the nuts and bolts of things, we've been splitting up into three or four groups, going to different classrooms, and teachers choose which ones they want to go to, and just basically learning from each other. So, you know, people doing strategies, classroom management, NearPod, other technologies. So it's been really kind of a, a nice way to, to not only break up a faculty meeting, but to learn from, from other people that you work with and, and see what everybody's doing in different disciplines, so.
It's also really nice because during a school day, we don't get those opportunities. You know, we were in our own classrooms, so having that time to actually see what our peers, our colleagues have been doing in their classroom, it's nice to have that opportunity to learn in that way.
And in terms of our PLC time, it feels like there's never enough time, but we're using that to not only look at our MCAS data and our STAR data, but also just continue to revise and rewrite our curriculum and sort of just make sure within our departments that we're, that we're all on track and kind of going in the same direction. Did I miss anything there?
I don't think so. I think we covered it.
I think that's our last slide. Any questions?
Would anyone like to start? It's going to be me again.
Sure.
Sorry. I, I just want to say that it sounds like there's a lot of good stuff happening. No, unintended, good stuff, good stuff happening at our high school, and it, I mean, I, I can feel the collaboration that's coming through with this, so it's, it's exciting to see. And I, I think it's going to be a very good direction, so as you were speaking of a lot of this stuff, I could see it happening, and I, I think that it will all work, work out well if, if it falls into place. So any questions for our high school team? Or other comments on the work? I would like to attend that college day, no care. I would actually volunteer to drive the minivan, but I'm sure you'll have more kids sign up than would fit in my car.
It's going to be interesting logistically.
Feed them. Feed them, feed the kids.
Feed them a lot.
Pack snacks. They'll get a lot out of that, but.
We did three in one day, so.
Did you?
Good luck.
Well, I was actually thinking, when he said that, like CCRI, RIC, and PC, you can do it all like fifteen.
You've got to keep them in Massachusetts, Dan, but no. No, I.
All right, Worcester them.
Worcester or Dudley or?
Yeah.
I don't mean we have to, I'm just saying.
Get Worcester State.
I was thinking one day. I wasn't thinking to get into one day, you'd have to.
Close it together. All right, so looking for a motion to approve the high school school improvement plans as presented.
So moved.
Motion made by Dan, second by Erin Z. And any other questions for the team or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And I will just notate that Carrie has come in, Tammy has stepped away, we still have a quorum for our votes, so we're in a good place. That was unanimous. And thank you so much. Thanks for being here tonight.
Yeah, thank you so much for being here.
And moving forward, we have the JFK AFM complex. Dr. Rimka and the entourage that she has with her this evening.
Didn't Esther retire?
Yes.
So no, Esther is not coming out of retiring. We just wanted her to talk.
I didn't think she was, by the way. Guest.
Oh, thank you.
Don't ask.
I thought she was out of retirement. I thought you were.
Are you retiring?
No. She just wanted the cake last year.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Again.
Thank you. So sorry we took so long, but we're very proud of our kids. But, so I, I'm going to just go over some of the data that we have in front of you. So MCAS math, we see huge improvement, huge growth. We look at grade three, 66% student meeting and or exceeding expectations, and grade four, 42%, five is 52%. Reading, we got some work to do. Grade three, 47%, for, grade four, 46%, and grade five, 47%. MCAS science, we had a huge growth, and we have 59% meeting or exceeding. This one, I counted the report, it's funny because Jason called me one day and said, Jenny, can you come up for a second? I say, oh, am I in trouble? I went up there, have you seen your report? I'm like, no, no, don't scare me. And he said, no, I want you to look at this. And if you look at the first bar, like high need, we are, we, 71% SGP, we perform better than 70%, 71% of the state. Am I right? Jason, correct me if I'm wrong. Low income is 80%. Student with disability, 53%. And our Hispanic and Latino students, we perform better than 98% of the students in the state. And then, you know, we've got some work to do with the rest of our students, we perform better than only 46%. This is huge for us because we talk about all means all, we really, all means all to us. When we look at this, we really don't know. We do know, but we don't really don't know who they are. We didn't say, oh, yeah, he's a Hispanic Latino student, we're going to group them, and this is what we do, but we really like, you know, offer that, you know, instruction.
Right. And if I can speak to that, I taught science to the two inclusion classrooms last year, and then my counterpart told, was teaching social studies. So this was a huge surprise to me, because I think that this is attributed more to like the academic rigor, like we held them accountable. Like, we didn't teach them differently, we just gave them the support they needed, and they rise to the occasion. So when I see this, like, yes, like, I'm proud of the students, but I also know that it can be done in other content areas, that when you really support the learning, it can happen anywhere. And I mean, science, I would not say is my favorite subject, but like when you, when you have the buy-in, and you know that you're supporting them in every way you can, but also really keeping that high level of expectation, I mean, it's astounding what they were able to do.
And as you know, you know, we have some parents here, and at the elementary school, we don't teach science every day. So we really have to find ways to incorporate science in other areas. So, you know, last year, a STEM teacher really collaborated with our grade-level teachers and say, you know, asking them topics that they couldn't cover, and she would incorporate into STEM.
Giving them those hands-on learning opportunities, which was amazing, because they were hearing it and seeing it from different people. We did the same thing in RTI right before the science MCAS, like just going back and making sure that we hit those things, really targeted instruction, and it, it shows when everybody buys in, and you're thinking all means all, it happens.
So one thing from the, the MCAS, we noticed that.
Jenny, you forgot the second half of that story. So we looked at the data, and then what happened after that?
I hugged you.
Yeah. She said, oh my God, I'm going to hug her, and she hugged me.
She is. That was not Jenny.
Oh, my God. Me neither. But we were very proud.
Incredible work.
I was very, very happy, and. You have to embarrass me in front of people. Come on. Oh, God. So anyway, we look at the MCAS data. One thing Jason really pointed out to us that we really didn't look at was the discrepancy between male and female in ELA. Our females still are almost double, outperform our student. Grade five was kind of leveled off a little bit, but grade three and four definitely, you know, like the, our girls are performing better than our boys. So we got some work to do over there, and we'll talk about that when we go over our plan. This is our star, a lot of opportunities for us. Grade three math is like about 50% students meeting or exceeding, and then reading is under 50%. Special needs student in grade three, pretty much 100% of them either not meeting or partially meeting. This is the group of students that went through the whole pandemic since kindergarten. So I'm not making excuses, but we have a lot of work to do. Grade four math is over 58%, and reading is also under 40%, under 50%. And special ed, we have some proficiency, 35% in math, and most of them, 100% of them partially met on that meeting.
Can I just speak to this for a minute?
Sure, sure, sure.
So we were really lucky as well as a, as a school, that Jenny gave us additional time outside of PLC during like lunch and recess to sit down with our teams, sit down with the interventionists, and start to look at root causes, like identify where are these students falling? How can we move them from like, especially the yellow to the blue, like getting them to that meeting and exceeding category, and how we're going to be able to like leverage everybody? How can we bring in the reading and the math interventionists, other content areas to just really make it happen? So we've been gifted with a lot of time to do that, so we have a plan moving forward that we'll get to.
I just want to clarify something. I didn't take their lunch away. They should say lunch at recess.
She gave us time, sorry.
We couldn't eat.
And then math in grade five, same thing, under 50%, and reading under 50%. Special need, we get some proficiency there with math, 23%, and reading is 17%. So this is big for us. We very proud of our work since the summer, that we've been working on the Portrait of a Graduate, using the high school Portrait of a Graduate, and make, we want to make sense to our students. So Danielle, you want to?
Sure. So when we, we've always been talking about the POG, because we have a lot of members that were on the POG committee, but last year, we kind of brought it into fruition, and this summer, we worked really hard over this. We did what the other schools were talking about. We started to take some of the characteristics and traits that are in each one of those pillars and make them student-friendly ICAN statements. and make them student-friendly I can statements. Then that led to an I L T discussion where I said, you know, we have these, these students of the month, why aren't we not tying it to this? Because if we truly want our students to be this upon completion of graduation, we need to work on it now. So as you can see, the months are aligned, so like November, March, they'll be awarded for character. October and April citizenship, December, May collaboration, January communication and February critical thinking. The students are becoming familiar with this, starting to hang this in the classroom, really talk about those traits and break down the vocabulary. So they know what this means, it's not just an abstract document to them.
Actually, I have a student said to me yesterday, Ms. Ramka, what are the criteria for October? And I say, don't you have it in your classroom? He go, well, you really should be posting it in the lunchroom so people can look at it and so they can, we can set our goals, I say, ooh. What are you looking for? So, you know, really, you know, instill that in their, in their head. So these are our goals.
So the what, talking about the curriculum, I'll let you guys read that for a second and then sum it up. Do you have it on that thing as well? So we're really digging into, starting to evaluate the curriculums that we already have in place that we've adopted over the past couple of years. And then also start to think about the history curriculum, which that was exciting, I was part of the, I am a part of the history committee. So we did a lot of great talk today and just hearing the commonalities between the different schools and how we're all hoping to bring that together. The work is being done in every one of the schools. The second goal being to really focus in on the writing. We, not only do we look at the M C A S data, we looked at the student responses and really started looking at, again, root causes. Like why are they at scoring, simple things like the conventions, we all decided what we needed to do. We're breaking down the writing prompts, decomposing the question, making sure they understand what the question's asking them. Because that was to me, us was so apparent, they started to write, but they were writing to what they thought the answer was or the question was, rather than what it actually was. So really, the high school had talked about ACE and then there's also C E R with STEM scopes. But really making a claim statement, having the right evidence to back it up and then their reasoning, like how do they know that to be true? And so as a school, we're really focusing on our writing, the how obviously being our instruction. So we're gonna continue to implement the curriculum that we have in place, making sure that we're equitable access, which we've been talking about, all means all. And really accelerate growth for everybody. So yes, we look at our, you know, students with needs, but then also really looking at we can extend and enrich the higher achieving students. We do that again in R T I, it's been amazing to see because even our highest level students still have things that they need to work on. It's not so much that they need to be extended and enriched, but they also have target areas that we need to focus on to really fill even their gaps. So that we can push them ahead and then continue with our evidence-based strategies. We're really focused on this. The kids can repeat them all back to you and just working so that they're supported in all content areas.
And we're very fortunate to have our after-school program, so our teachers collaborating with the after-school program and that's why Esther is here. So she can talk a little bit about the collaboration.
Would you like me to talk about that? Would you like me to talk from here or come up with the team?
Join, let's talk from there.
Hello.
Welcome back.
I don't think I ever left. Our after-school program is up and running and it is, it's thriving. We have a total of ninety-two children, Monday through Friday, Monday through Thursday. Monday, Wednesdays, we have about sixty-eight kids, Tuesday, Thursday, we have about seventy-eight. So what we're trying to do as an after-school program is really make a program an extension of their learning day. We are collaborating with the teachers, especially with math, our goals are math in the C C L C program. But then writing is a component that they're working on in, in school. So what we've done is we've added a writer's cafe taught by one of our instructors. So most of the kids go through that writer's cafe taught by Emma Gasko. And then we have everyone going through a crazy math club. It's a free online program that we were able to get, they give you all the materials and the kids are doing challenging critical thinking activities and they don't even know they're doing math, they absolutely love it. So we're trying to, you know, focus our attention on what they need during the school time as well. We're also looking at, at data, I know that the boys dislike reading. So we're trying to incorporate some fun activities, so, you know, to engage them in that area. But we're just, we are, we're just trying to work hand in hand with the teachers to just extend the children's learning. The kids are having a ball, some of the other activities that we're offering is STEM, we're offering cake decorating by Becca Boullet, the kids love it. They have P E activities, they have math activities, science. So we really are in collaboration with the teachers. We are looking at M C A S data as well. I know when I was teaching last year, we never got to certain topics. So what we're doing is we're trying to hone in on those skills that the kids need and math, E L A especially. And bringing some, some teachings to the kids during the after-school program as well. So we're trying to map it all up so that we're working in collaboration with the daytime teachers.
And I know we mentioned about the discrepancy between the boys and girls achievement in the how. You know, we've, we, we right now try to brainstorm some ideas, like selecting certain texts for the boys because they only like certain texts. And some of the, you know, activities we can do during the school days, besides in the classroom, lunch bunch, you know, reading some books that interest boys. And do some fun activities with them. And so we're in a process of thinking about like ways that to encourage our boys to read.
So the next thing is the whole child and our goals that go along with that. And we tied the, oh, sorry. We tied the whole child to the portrait of a graduate and what that embodies. And we're not just teaching kindness to the kids, we're teaching them self-regulation strategies and problem-solving skills. And how to help themselves when they need that check-in.
Show me, add something, can I add something? So in addition to, you know, we have a lot of S E L training, the social emotional learning, the complex, this year, we started a champion program. Last year, the district sent out a survey to students and we looked through the whole survey and we have, we found something in common. It's some of our kids don't feel belong in school. So we work with our counselors, identified twenty-two, so far, twenty-two students. We give them one-on-one, every child has a champion. I wanna be a champion, but he didn't wanna be with me, so I had to find another champion for that child. So the champion program, they, our champions spend about twenty minutes to half an hour a week. So it'll be a student choice, could be recess, could be lunchtime, could be just doing maybe period one, the teachers, you know, release this child to the champion. They spend time, we're not talking about, you know, your work, we play games, we walk, you know, we do things that the child wants.
Positive relationships, it's all just.
Building that relationship. We also implemented three-hour room is the, we sat, we flat, we flat and we restore. Because we feel like, you know, not everything is like, we don't wanna just, you know, give students just a negative punishment. Because they see that as negative, right? I always tell the students, every action has a consequence. But we then, we, you know, reflect on that, sometime they look at those punishments as all negative, you don't like me, they lose trust. And we wanna build that relationship with them, even though, yes, they're being held accountable, but we have to restore that relationship. And we also wanted to train our staff to restore repractice, you know, so they can repair those, build and repair those relationships.
And then we, yeah, and then we have the community. And we wanna pull in all stakeholders together to create a school climate that's welcoming to our students and maintaining our school community. And these differences that we talk about, they're not just what each student identifies as, it's kind of like their home life, their culture, their ethnic background, their views. We wanna make school as welcoming to all those backgrounds and different cultures as we can. And I think last week in P L C, we talked about what can we do to bring in these cultures in our school? And one of the third grade teachers is in a class right now and they talked about just hanging flags in the main hallway. So kids can see like, oh, that's a flag from.
And they identify with it, especially the parents that are coming in, like our Ls where they maybe have a communication barrier. They walk in the door, we might not be able to right way communicate with them, we're walking through the hallway, but they know they're welcome because they're identifying with something within the school. And then also we, as a staff in that same meeting we talked about last week is understanding we have, you know, unconscious bias and removing that so that everybody truly feels welcome and really just reflecting ourselves as a, as a school.
And then go to the two-way communication, so teachers to parents, but then also parents back to teachers. And how we can facilitate the opportunities of parents to be able to come in and volunteer and feel included and engaged in our school community in different ways that we can help with that.
So lastly is our P D plan. So I know the high school talked about a lot about some of the training that very similar, my middle school, similar to the middle school, they into math, the Wago training. We, last year, we started the setting goals with students, so we provide our staff these goal-setting training. But this year, we have a lot of new staff, so we figured we need to do a refresher, making sure that our staff are, you know, on the same page. And we review our student work protocol, again, we started last year, but we wanna make sure our new staff are all on board and, and understand the process. We already conduct one of our, one student work protocol with all grade level. Also, the D E I training and the D I B training. I mentioned earlier, you know, introduce restoring practice to the staff. And then January and April, we continue with some of these training. Into math is not, you know, my coach asked me, is it one time and that's it? No, because we're gonna implement, implement all, you know, the, the math program, but we, then we're gonna say, okay, let's talk to the teachers. What else do you need? What are you struggling with? So doing learning walk, my observations, conversation with teachers. And we would continue coming up with these P D that we might need from the district to provide to our teachers. Doing a faculty meeting, last year, we, we, no, actually doing P D Day, we did the mini workshops. We like to start doing that during our faculty meeting.
Which was interesting, the high school just said the same thing because it was, it was awesome. We took the second half of P D last year, we have so much institutional knowledge where you have these teachers who are experts and you don't even know. So they were, did, I think we did one on tech, we did one on feedback. And we got to choose, we got to decide where we needed to go and on that P D, we took advantage of the opportunities we had. So now we're gonna start doing that the end of every other staff meeting, so we can do that. And then we're lucky to have so many new amazing staff in the building and we thought a lot about the onboarding process. How do we bring them up to speed where we're at? We wanna create a digital library or we're in the process of a digital library. So when they come in, they can understand who they can go to, they can watch videos of like learning walks that people have done to see what we're about, what is our instructional focus about?
We talked about, yeah, like taking time, Jenny talked about giving us time to go into each other's classrooms. I get to go into a lot of the classrooms and see so many skills and share it with other teachers that I think it's so beneficial for other teachers to be able to do that too.
Right, almost like a conduit of learning, like, you know, Carly gets to see these practices and then not only do you go out and share them out, but she's also starting to tell teachers, hey, I see how you're teaching this, maybe you should go, you know, see this other teacher and see how they're doing it or give that a try. And it's been awesome because we've had the time to do those learning walks.
And we're also gonna create a library.
The library, digital library, yep.
As I text Jason this morning, any opportunity we can get Jesse, Jesse to help? You know, we call some of these video lessons, because I did that with my phone last year, it wasn't very.
Audio's not good?
Yeah. Anything else?
I think that's all of it.
Any questions?
Would anyone like to start?
I just love the energy, that you guys are excited. It's just you that you're excited and telling me that the kids are excited.
They wanna know what's so exciting.
Yeah, at that age, I just feel like you guys are so excited and like wanna engage and have this big plan and that makes them wanna engage and figure it out.
Like Carly said, she, I'm gonna call you out, she didn't have notes tonight and I go, you don't need notes, like this is what we do every day, like you come and we can just speak to it because we believe in it. And we, you know, we're living it every day, so that's like a good feeling to know that people really have the buy-in.
Anyone else? I didn't wanna speak over everybody, so I, I have a list here. So first, back to the, the grade five science. And Mrs. Keen, you said you were so surprised. It is no surprise.
Thank you, will you make me cry here?
When you said that you were teaching that team, I, that was, I mean, no surprise. But amazing that it was able to come out on paper and, and, you know, and show us that the work does work, like you said. So thank you. And if you could do that with every other subject, no pressure. But it is very evident the way you share, you know, the excitement and what you have and what you do. So keep doing what you do. The, that goes back to what you were saying, I made a note here, it's like teachers teach teachers. So that's, you know, what you're doing at the end of your faculty meetings, it sounds very exciting. I have a note here to myself, I don't even remember what it was, it's grade three math growth, I don't know what I wanted to know, but we'll get back to that. The star is testing, when do you, when do you do that again?
January.
Okay, and then at the end of the year?
Yeah.
So this will look very different by June. And Jenny, will you bring us some of your champions? Could we find a way to invite them? And, you know, I, I'll let you, let us know how that would, how we could incorporate it. You know, we could have like a champion night or some kind of, or if we wanna spread it out through the spring maybe or, you know, and let them know maybe they're working towards that. Or let me know how we can do that because I would love to have them here with as many people that were, as, that were here tonight. We need to get more, more people to come to our meetings and acknowledge them and recognize them. Or, and maybe even with the portrait of the graduate awards that you're going to do each month too, so. All good work, very exciting, like Erin said, you can feel it and I'm sure that that energy is in the building and in the rooms when the kids come in in the morning. So after-school program, is that just three through five?
Three through five.
It is.
It was a grant that we go.
It's the twenty-first century, it's about, we get a hundred, I think the grant was a hundred and seventy thousand a year.
Been seventy-two thousand every year.
Every year for three years.
What a great number, what a great.
And I'm excited about bringing the high school kids on, they'll be starting next week, hopefully.
Clearly, you need extra hands with all those kids.
They, the kids, you know, we're trying to just teach them, you know, expectations, responsibility, it's a lot of kids, but they're.
And they want to be there, they sign up for this.
You know, we have our challenges, but, but they're rising to the occasion.
And even like the, I think the homework help, like seeing some of these kids, right, that maybe went home and parents, not that they can't help them, but like, you know, I didn't learn math that way. And they're having this opportunity, they come in so proud the next day because they have it done. So like teachers have been so grateful for the work that's been happening, it's been awesome.
I think the parents are just appreciative when they're home after dinner and it's done. So I, I mean, it's, that extension of the day is.
They still should be looking at their homework. Collaborating.
Yes, they should, definitely ask about it.
And we are, I, one thing we didn't mention, we actually said as a whole faculty, what can we do this year and get more parents in? We want them here and we came up with about ten, ten to twelve.
Well, they're part of the community too, if you think about it, is it, they're the community, parents, community, they, you know, they should.
And one of the events, we're actually gonna call the parent out, are you smarter than your child? So we're gonna do that as a math night.
You will scare them away.
Hey, brush up on those math facts later.
The parents learning.
You have to hope to. Calculator when they walk in, cheat sheet. Thank you, though, any other questions or? All good work, we're very excited for it, I'm looking for a motion for the school improvement plan as presented for J F K A F M.
Second.
Motion made by Erin and second by Kerry. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are you unanimous?
Thank you.
I know this work is already happening, so thank you very much for sharing.
And last but not least, for our school improvement plans, Millville Elementary. Ms. Schaefer. And our new instructional coach. Thank you for being here. Hand it over to the two of you. That's for last.
Good evening. So. There we go. So, some of our initial data that we had looked at, we have two different measures on there, so the first one, because the STAR math does not cover K and 1, we use the math, the Intu Math Growth, Growth Measure, which is the new math assessment, we'll talk about that in a second, for all, because that encompasses all of our grades. So for start early literacy, grades K and 1 was covered in that one, and then reading was for grade 2. So 48% of our students are at or above grade level expectations in kindergarten, and 61% in grade 1. So, we've made some nice gains from last year's K, and actually, we had some discussions during our PLC meetings, and grade 1 has noticed a big difference in like letter recognition, letter sounds, starting to blend some letters together to make some words, so we noticed a big difference in that. And then 32% of our students are grade, at or above grade level in reading. Now, this is a very different test from early literacy, because early literacy is a lot more, you know, which is letter B, or which sound makes a book sound, and versus the reading one, they do have to do a little more reading. So, it is a big change for them for the first time, and it does change as the year goes on.
And then for the Intu Math Growth Measure, I'm sorry, I'm Liz, I'm the new instructional coach at Millville Elementary.
Liz used to teach with us before, so I just pretend like she knows.
Yes, a long time ago, I was here before, and I have now returned. So anyway, I'm sorry, I felt like I had to start there. So the Intu Math has a growth measure program that is three times a year, and it is an online-based test. And the thing about this is, this measure does actually kind of tweak the questions based on the student's answer. So if they get it correctly, it kind of moves up a level, if they continue to go correctly, it moves up, or if they answer incorrectly, it does change the remaining questions to make sure that it gets an accurate score for them. But the one thing that I do want to point out before I start going through these percentages is that in kindergarten especially, almost all of the children have never even used a laptop before, so when having to kind of navigate the mouse and scroll down to hit submit and all the things, it does make it a little bit tricky. And I truly do think that did affect some of the scores, because it's showing that only 11% are on or above grade leveling K. And I think that that first, this first year, at the beginning of the year, I truly think that that is kind of changing a little bit of those scores. Hopefully, by middle and end of year, the tech piece will be kind of taken out, because they will have a lot more time to have had practice. But then in grade 1 and 2, you know, we do have a little bit of work to do in math. This new program is very strong, the teachers seem to really like it. There's lots of conversations happening between the teachers, lots of work at our PLCs to kind of focus on what we can do to support the teachers as well as the students. And I do think that it will be much more comfortable, I think the students will be a lot more comfortable the next round when we do these.
And this is, was a common trend that was noticed even during MCAS, that math was a weaker area in the district, so, so it's definitely something we're focusing on as well.
This is our new curriculum, though, so this is.
So the bottom, the Intu Math, yeah.
The Intu Math score, the percentages we see up here are, is really new, even to grade 1 and 2, the assessment.
Yes, yep.
So this whole assessment.
Grade 1 and 2 has had the exposure and technology, though, it's a little bit different.
Yeah, no, but it's, it is new curriculum and a new, it's not, they did Stars last year.
So they, so, grade 1 really didn't have a great, they used Star Math at the end of the year, Star Math is really actually geared for grade 2 enough, but we used it to have a math measure, because we did identify, and we talked about this, pre-K, I mean, K and 1 did not have a math assessment. So, Star, Early Literacy does say, does, gives you math scores, but there's no, when you do printout of, of goal areas and standards, there's nothing for math in there. So when you actually dig into that report, there's nothing for math in there. So for our plan, we have the first part, we received an early literacy grant from DESI this year, and we have a literacy consultant coming in once a week, every Wednesday. And she, the first couple of weeks, she was getting to know classrooms, she actually went in and did a little poem with students in the classrooms and introduced herself and what she was doing. She's going to be modeling some lessons, she sat, she's, right now, sat in some PLCs. And we've met with her and talked about what our goal is with this literacy grant. So obviously, we do have a gender gap identified in the MCAS data, so that's something we mentioned that we would like to work on. As Dr. Emka and the Complex team mentioned, writing is another area, so we had asked for that as well. So, kind of working on the foundational skills for these kiddos to get them ready to go to the complex, so that they will go on with stronger reading, and ideally, reading, everybody reading by then, but at least stronger readers by then, and writers. So we do have, as part of the literacy grant, we do have two full day for six of our team members, two full day workshops. We had our first one on.
Monday.
Monday. I'm like, oh. And then we have 12 coffee hours, so all staff can come to those. So we, the first one, I think we had 10, 10 or 12 people there.
Yep, and then last time, I think there was eight or nine.
Yep, and then we had, just had a coffee hour on Wednesday.
Do you want to say what the coffee hours?
So, I'm sorry.
Do you coffee hours look distressed?
It's basically instructional tools that she can share with all staff. Everybody is welcome, of course, it doesn't have to be just the core team that's working with the grant. And it allows for her to kind of gear that towards what we need, right? So we had talked about wanting to do some of more of that literacy and comprehension, we've talked a lot about turn and talk tools and be it ways to kind of set up the classroom. She's shared lots of resources that the teachers have already like hit the ground running with, so that's really exciting, and it kind of allows for that smaller group size, so she can have those conversations with the staff. And then she also kind of allows us to be able to share that information back to the rest of the staff.
And then we have six one-and-a-half hour, where we have 11, 12, 12 team members, and we have six one-and-a-half hour sessions, but also others are welcome, but we have those people on the team as well. And that one, we talked, we tried some different strategies, and then I, the next day, one of the teachers said, you know, I just, we learned this yesterday, to another teacher, do you want to come see it? So she was already implementing it. And just simple tweaks to teachers, when kids are tapping out words, you know, instead of tapping it this way, they, she taught them, if they're left-handed, turn your hand, and you can, so they're seeing it left to right.
That way you're seeing it in a direction.
Instead of, instead of them seeing it backwards, they're seeing it left, we're like, oh my gosh, what a little tweak to your practice that helps the students and you. And she actually also taught them how to, when they're doing it for the students, how to teach it, so they're reading, like if you're the students, you're reading, again, left to right. So just minor tweaks to practices and stuff that we're already doing to help increase our, you know, literacy growth. And then our second goal is ensuring that our mass students, our students are increasing their growth in math, ensuring implementation is being used in the math program, and that they're continuing to work toward grade level expectations. And our last goal is developing our social studies, that is a focus for the district this year, to meet the needs of our K to 2 students. So we have, Liz is actually on the social studies team, they met today for the first time, and we have another teacher, a grade 2 teacher on the team as well.
So this one for the how, similar to what a lot of the other schools have brought up, is kind of that all means all piece, and really having those specific conversations about how to get everybody to be moving forward, and really building that solid educational foundation, right? In the early grades, it really is getting those basic skills, so that they are very strong and, and ready to continue learning with that foundation. We are gonna continue to adapt our evidence-based strategies for pre-K to 2 to kind of meet the needs of the groups that we have. Again, after, I know that a couple of people have mentioned, you know, the, the struggles after COVID, right, and being back into it, and really hitting the ground running to make sure that we're kind of filling any gaps that we might have had. Lots of discussion at those PLC meetings about how we're meeting the needs of everybody within the classrooms, and what we can do a little bit better as we go forward.
And even looking at student, student work, so taking student work samples, and one of the things we're going to be working on in the next couple of weeks is developing writing prompts to assess student writing throughout the year, as well as using the rubric from Wonders to do some calibration with staff, to make sure we're all looking at it and risk grading it the same way. So kind of making sure that we're all on the same page, like that's the most important piece there, too, as well. And obviously, all means all, making sure that all kids are involved. The whole child. So, oh, so, you know, with COVID, and this kind of goes with both the next two, kindergarten celebrate, kindergarten orientation this year, a parent actually said to me who has a second grade student, it's so nice to actually finally be able to come into the school, and that was like, wow. Like, I, it didn't hit me that the kindergarten, well, now second graders, the families had never been into the school because of COVID. So, it really made us think, and kind of both of these things have to do with that, that we really want to develop that, that, those relationships and the belonging among not only kiddos, but also the parents and the community members. So, continuing to build that inclusive community where students are learning, you know, obviously, pre-K to 2, they're 3 to 7, 3 to 8, they're still learning how to interact with their friends. So how to solve a conflict with a friend, and working through that, and treating each other respectfully. You know, I always say, what is our, what do we have to do to our friend? Be kind. And one day, someone actually, one of the kids said, be, and I said, be, K-I-N-D, and I said, okay, so she knows what it means. So, so that's something we're really teaching our, you know, our youngest learners in the district, and how to be, you know, contributing members of society and in our school. We're, we're a community, and that's what we're working for there.
Well, and building that foundation, right, brings it back to that, if they don't have those social and emotional skills to be able to like, sit and listen to the teacher and be respectful of somebody else talking, that instructional piece kind of loses, the, the kids aren't really getting what we're trying to teach them, because they can't sit next to the friend without poking them and pushing them, and somebody's, he pushed me off the chair, and all those things that are so age-appropriate for that group, it's so important to remember that that foundation really starts there, so that they can actually do the learning that they need to do.
And one other thing we have for this, the whole child, is we are working on our Portrait of a Graduate as well, so the, so Jenny and Complex team had done theirs, and we're working backwards off of theirs towards the, towards the pre-K to 2 level. And our, again, Student of the Month is actually going toward the traits as well, and we are going to be sharing in my updates with two families, our ILT, we had a subgroup of the ILT found literature for our pre-K to 2 families around all the different charac, around all the different traits of the Portrait of a Graduate. So, we found books on character, we found books on civic responsibility, we found books on everything. So we have a whole list of all for pre-K to 2, and some of them are Choose Love books, and some of them are just, we just found them all on video, so YouTube and all that, so that parents can watch them with their kids as well, so they know what we're talking about with the Student of the Month traits. So, trying to incorporate that family piece, yeah.
All right, so this last one would be about community and engaging the families in the activities to kind of make that homeschool connection. Back to what we had said, and, you know, many of these families that have the younger children were stuck in that COVID where they weren't able to have these really fun activities that we've done for years, and, so we're kind of bringing that all back, and families have been very excited, we've had the rock painting so far, the Halls of Ween stuff, we have lots of fun events planned this.
The bottom ones are ice cream social, coordination with the parents organization.
Yep, and kind of bringing those family events back to normal, I guess, whatever that might be. And just kind of, you know, allowing that engagement and informing families on what we're doing in the school, and kind of exposing them to that curriculum, and how great the teachers are working, you know, how hard the teachers are working in the classrooms, and how excited the kids and the staff are to show off all the awesome things that we do.
And also, teaching parents how to work with the curriculum with their kids, because even from when I was a student, it's very different in how they're teaching. So I'm like, oh boy. So, you know, we want to make sure the parents are able to support their child and know where to get resources, so go, how would go on to Intu Math and figure out how to get resources. I know, at least I know how to access curriculum, so when I help at home for homework, I can do that, it finds its stuff easier, but not all parents have been through that training. So helping with Resources for Wonders, helping with Resources for Intu Math, and making sure our families are comfortable with the curriculum so they can support their child, but also with our events, looking at making sure we're meeting all families. So when we do some of those parent nights, maybe allowing some virtual options, maybe doing some mornings, some nights, kind of surveying families to see, A, what's needed, and B, times that are, that are helpful. And some people just find it easier to be online listening, and they can still put their child to bed or feed dinner, because maybe they're the only ones home. So being cognizant of what our families need, and being able to support them that way. And we have some, I don't want to say what they all are, but we have some ideas that staff already, can I do this, and are you okay if I do this, and can we involve this person and this person? We found a really neat, a glow-in-the-dark literacy night. So I'm working, I just found that the other day, so I think it's gonna tie in perfectly, so we can involve families, and we've been kind of brainstorming some ideas. So, and I actually talked to the art teacher, and she, we found some, she, we just kind of figured out how we can incorporate art and make it glow in the dark, so that it can be displayed in the cafeteria. And so, we have some exciting ideas, and then some like reading, you know, flashlight readings, where I found, we found some little finger flashlights that they can read with, so inviting that time for families coming, and if families want to join us virtual for that, we can figure out a way to do that, too. So, and we talked about even partnering with the libraries, to see if the libraries could possibly come in and sign families up for library cards. How many families may not have a library card? So, seeing if that's something we can do as well. So we kind of talked about our PD in the work, but we are going, be, using the same PD as well as the ADL training, the DEIB training, we have our early literacy training, we have math training, a lot of different training to help support our students, staff, and get us ready. Any questions?
Questions? It can't be the first one every time.
I have a question, but I don't know if it's something that you guys know or not.
Try it. And I may say, no, I don't.
Blackstone Library wouldn't allow Millville kids to take books out.
So I.
Has that changed?
I think it.
I think it has, because Millville's accredited, right?
I think they can get a library, a Blackstone card, no? We'd have to verify it with Blackstone, but.
This is just very primary stages, but that's something, just because not.
But I'm sure Millville would be very excited to have the little ones get the cards, too.
Yeah. I just know from three or four years ago, I tried getting my stepson's cards, and they said no, because we were Millville, not Blackstone.
Yeah. The library wasn't accredited at the time, because it was not funded through our town meeting, but I believe it is corrected now, and that they are open the right amount of hours staffed, and we're back online with them. But even more reason to walk into the Millville Library, then. They have some exciting things going on there, too. Any other questions, Erin, or?
No, that was it.
Great job on the literacy grant. Did you say how much that was?
It was 48,000.
Just 150.
Good job. And so, once a week, and that's tying into every other.
And I should have mentioned, she uses, we're using the programs we're using to teach the strategies. So at the workshop Monday, the teachers were broken into like the school districts, because in part of the literacy grant, we had to have an approved, it had to be on like the list of approved programs from DESI, and, and Wonders is one of those. So we, so it has to be highly rated, and it does, so we, she's incorporating Wonders into with these strategies. So part, that was part of the discussion yesterday, is next time, we're gonna look at taking the Wonders program and implementing some of these strategies right within it.
Good. And that ties into every other improvement plan we already, the, the literacy part, it's the.
Do you see the threads?
Yeah, and you're the stepping stone of everything else that we've already gone through tonight, so it's important, and I'm glad you already had your focus on it. The math, when will that next assessment be for the kids? Will you do it in line with the reading?
It'll be the same STAR windows, because the early, they take them all at the same time.
Yep, so January.
Great. And we would love, maybe you could give us some ideas on how we could have some, some little ones visit us here, if you want, if they have anything to present to us, or, you know.
I'm sure we could get some hands up there.
That would be wonderful. And, you know, I would love to invite them here, so let me know what works, and we'll, we'll get them in here, too. Any other questions for Ms. Schaefer?
I just love the community piece, because we talk about all the time, like, how do
I just love the community piece because we talk about all the time, like, how do we get our oldest kiddos to feel they belong? But starting it and getting those families in at the beginning, I think that's going to be a huge thing to see Carrie through.
So I do have to tell you, the rock painting night, um, was actually a student that I had in fifth grade who is in her senior year this year. Not in district, unfortunately, but, um, she actually came back for a community project. She asked if she could help me with it. So, um, it was so nice that we were able to combine. And then you can see our SRO is in there too. He actually came and painted rocks with us. So if you actually come up to Millville, there's a whole bunch of nicely painted new rocks. Our rocks were from like 2012.
And I think he's very proud of that.
They, they are very proud of that.
Christina, Jill and I had a meeting two days ago in Christina's office and you know, she, you can see the walkway. And we saw the school resource officer walk out and the, and he grabbed his partner, another officer and brought him over. We said, what is he doing? Christina said, oh, he's showing him the Rocky.
That's great.
There you go.
But I'll piggyback what Carrie just said too. In getting the families into that building, that's actually so sad. It's such a, a, a nice, bright, beautiful space for the kids and for families that have had their kids in there for two years and never been in that building. But.
It was sad.
And then they're moving out next year. They're third grade. So.
Trying to squeak everything we can in this year.
Very glad to hear that, that it's all planned and ready for them. That it's, it's a nice spot. No Christmas event?
I'm not apologizing. I'm just asking. I'm not stringing any lights.
But thank you very much. Um, any other questions? We'll look for a motion to approve the school improvement plans for Millville Elementary School.
So motion.
Motion made by Ted and second by Dan. Any other questions or comments for the team tonight? Okay. And I said Ted and Dan. Sorry. If I don't write it down right now, I might not remember that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Very excited to.
It was very nice to meet you all.
You too.
Thank you.
Good night.
Sorry about the wait. It's crowded tonight.
Are we okay to go to the blueprint update? It'll be very quick. Um, our coach Mary, we, we have principal Mary and coach Mary. We have so many, a couple of Marys. So Mary is going to join us, Colanino, and talk a little bit, just very briefly about. Yes, about our blueprint. Um, remember we have an implementation monitoring team. And we talked about that, um, over the summer and Mary is the chair of that group and that is comprised of staff from across the district. So Mary's going to give us a quick update.
Thank you, Mary. I can't get it to work.
I'm pointing at the screen.
I think you have to point.
Uh, the one up here.
Up top. Oh, oh, sorry.
There you go. Yep.
Okay. So just to understand the progress that, that we've, that we've made, um, so far on the blueprint. Okay.
Point is right here.
Oh, window. Okay. So this is the completion of it. I'm, you've all seen this already. Um, I can't believe this.
There you go.
Now one to the end.
All done.
Point it right here.
Okay. I'm not moving my hand.
It just seems to be.
You just click it once.
Yeah. Okay. So go to the next one. We already did those. Excellent. So this is the, this is the team that we've implemented, um, and we've, we've met, um, twice. And it's, it, what it is, is, um, from all of the different schools. So some principals, some coaches, um, myself, um, Dr. Remka, Jenny, and, um,
So is a representative?
Yeah, of all the different schools.
Every school has a representative.
Yeah, more than one.
More than one representative.
Yeah. So all of the commitments that, that we have made, the goals, the curriculum, instruction, the whole child, the community, they, all of them have long-term goals and, um, supporting acts, uh, action steps. Um, that's a highlight. Um, and then we have put in, um, a monitoring team and that meets month, monthly.
Can I, can I add that?
Sure.
So the reason for the monitor team is we want to make sure that the work is being done and being done right. And make sure we meet the deadline. If we don't, then do we need to make some modification? So that's the reason for that monitor.
And, uh, we, we're all using the email signatures and the communication. And all of the school improvement plans had aligned to, to the blueprint. Also, a lot of the, um, staff has had professional development with that as well. The Portrait of a Graduate is partially finished. So the high school is finished, the, um, the complex is finished. And the middle school and the, um, and Millville are continuing to work on, on their piece. And then we have a site council, which we just saw and we met on October 12th and then, um, yeah.
Yeah. So October 12th, we had school council from every school. Uh, we have one school council combined meeting. I'm sorry, I should probably say it here. And, um, so we want, you know, we gathered all our school coun, um, school council members together and, uh, not kind of create, want to create that community team that we talked about. Not, not necessarily all the school council want to be on that team, but what we want from them is, do you know somebody in the community would like to be on that team? So to help us. So I just wrote the description for them because they need a talking point. So we have a couple of parents are reaching out to other community members to be on that team.
So this is what we're doing now, uh, right now for the next step, and that would be the full launch and implementation. Waiting again for the other two schools to finish. Um, data days to measure the impact of the implementation. And then we, uh, we have started quarter two action steps to be developed. And so we have people from that initial committee that you saw the list from that, um, are taking a piece of, of, of the, of each part of the goal and overseeing the, um, and overseeing that that gets accomplished. And then, uh, again, what Jenny had just mentioned, community involvement and continued support. And that is it.
Any questions?
Any questions or? I just want to point out, um, I hope that the committee can see how all of this ties together. And even from what Jason presented us at, at our last meeting, um, for his goals for this year, the district goals. So, and this is all going to bring everything into that funnel. You know, in, in June, we should see so much progress from everyone working together.
And, and I have to say that I can't wait. I, I don't wait. I always try to go ahead of time. So in the summer, we were working on this school improvement plan, but then the, uh, blueprint was done. I'm like, oh, we gotta go back and do some work because I should have waited. So we really.
It just added to it, right?
Work off that, huh?
It just added to it, right? It, it just, it does all end up flowing and, you know, that's how we see the outcomes. And it's very, very clear to me this year. It, it has been in the past too. But everything just, you know, came together tonight. So I, I hope everyone else noticed that, um, with what was presented and, finishing with the blueprint 2.0. So, um, thank you very much for that. It's, it's exciting to see that coming out too. It was. And it was also from, because I haven't been doing this for very long, to just see from where I started learning about this and then having to look over all of the school improvement plans and to see how clear it was. It was, it was really impressive. Yeah. Good. Well, thank you so much for the update. We look forward to the next one and all good work. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. And so we're going to shift gears and I, um, you said it better than I would have in terms of the alignment, the connection, the cohesion. So that was perfect. It was a nice wrap up. Thank you. The next item on my report is our business office reorganization. And before we walk through this, I actually want to thank all of the committee members, um, for your help with this. I want to thank Deirdre, a huge shout out for her help with this. And, um, spent a lot of time with Jill too, kind of talking through Jill PG, talking through the different kind of scenarios and, and options and what's really best for our school system at this time. One of the things I think that's just important to note is where we are a living, breathing organization, we're an ecosystem. We're constantly changing. We're trying to get better. I think, Erin, you said, uh, you know, a couple of minutes ago, just with the school improvement work, yes, it was aligned before, but you really can see it now, right? In terms of the connections and the through lines between everything we're doing, uh, preschool to grade 12. Um, and such as we has evolved with our teaching and learning work, we also have evolved in our business office. And so, uh, before you this evening is an overview of where we were in school year 21, 22 with our business office design, just a couple of the key positions. And I'll talk a little bit in a second about why it says 21, 22 and not 22, 23. Uh, there is a reason for that. And what we are proposing for school year 23, 24, which is, uh, next July 1, uh, and gearing up for that school year. And then of course, the positions and the overall costs. Before delving into that, just very briefly, the reason that we are looking at this reorganization from a school year 21, 22 perspective is because this year we are in flux. We have an interim business manager who is doing amazing work with us. And her insight in this was instrumental. But it didn't make a lot of sense to have this year as kind of that, in that column, because this year we knew going into it wasn't going to be what we were trying to do, right? This is why we had brought on board an interim to help us kind of tease some of this out. And so instead, we're looking at what we had in 2021 and 2022. And in that uh, structure, we had an assistant superintendent that was in the budget for a hundred and forty thousand and a confidential assistant in that office, which is, which was Stephanie, who has now since moved over to, um, the executive assistant in the superintendent office, uh, and then supporting the school committee. Um, and so she was in that confidential assistant position with the assistant superintendent. So the two of those positions combined were at a total of a hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred dollars. That was 21, 22. And again, this year was a little kind of wonky because we have an interim and it's, it's a little bit of a different model. So if you look at the school year 23, 24 design, you will see, uh, a few different positions in here. And I just want to touch on each of them. Before I do, I want to bring our attention to the bottom where that little asterisk is, uh, as a reminder, a placeholder, that when we reorganized, uh, some of this work initially in July, you, I'm sure you recall, we talked about taking some of that assistant superintendent salary. It was about fifteen thousand is what it ended up being and applying that to the lead coach role, which if you remember, we reorganized from a building coach position. So we actually took the building coach salary that was already in the budget. We took fifteen thousand from the assistant soup salary that was already in the budget. We just moved it over. I, I mentioned it here because, um, it is part of that one forty. So I want to make sure to capture every penny that, that was in that a hundred and forty thousand dollar salary. And so, uh, when thinking how best to capture that, uh, we wanted to identify it here so that you can see it is part of that overall salary amount. So I wanted to bring that to the surface for everybody. Uh, but what we are looking for, for our business office is something a little bit different. We are not seeking any longer the position of assistant superintendent, and I'll talk a little bit about the why in a second. We're actually looking for a director of finance and operations. Those committee members who, um, God bless you for having been on this journey with me this long, but you remember looking all the way back to when we put this position in place, the assistant superintendent position, the district was in a super different situation. We had a lot of work too around facilities. We did a facilities director. We had a lot of work to do around, um, financial systems and structures that we needed to put in place, personnel systems and structures. Uh, we had a lot of curriculum work to do. Um, we had a lot of work to do around a regional agreement. You remember when I started, we didn't have a special education person. We didn't have a finance person. Thank you Jill for stepping in and sticking with us, uh, in that seat. And so there was a lot of work that needed to be done. We are at a place now in forecasting forward where we're going, to connect it back to our, um, district goals and looking at our facility structure and thinking about what's that short-term plan going to look like. I really think, uh, for where we are in our, um, in our organization, we need something different. And I don't think that we need an assistant superintendent at this point. I think we need a director of finance and operations. Somebody that can focus very strongly on, frankly, just that, like the dollars and cents and some of the, um, operational work in the school system. We have now with our director of facilities, we have a lead coach, our director of learner support services. This really is that last key position in the reorganization that is going to be necessary to round out, um, that level of the leadership team. It also comes at a cost savings. Um, the assistant superintendent was budgeted for a hundred and forty thousand. While the salary range for a director of finance, we think will be somewhere between one fifty and one twenty-five. In this scenario, we have it at a hundred and twenty thousand. Additionally, we are looking for some, some support. Uh, the confidential assistant uh, in the business office prior did a lot of the accounts receivable stuff and did a lot of the, um, like journal entries as far as, you know, preschool tuition and the money that was coming into the district. Um, and so we are going to be looking for a, a part-time clerk moving forward, um, in that for our next fiscal year. And I know the committee is aware, we do have a very part-time, part-time person helping us out now. She's doing about fifteen hours a week. Um, so it's not a significant amount of time, but really helping to just balance out the fiscal work that we're having done in my office with the other, um, work that needs to be done as far as, um, the responsibilities underneath the executive assistant role. And then lastly, um, you heard the term grants a lot, I think, tonight and talking about the different work we're doing. It's kind of a double edged sword. It's a great thing. Um, they, just the one grant alone that, um, the complex team was talking about the 21st century program, that's over five hundred thousand dollars over three years. That's just one. That is literally just one of the grants we have written. Um, and so what we are looking for is, I think, fairly small in number in terms of the grants management. It's not a full-time position. It's really just some additional, um, dollars that we can compensate with the financial assistant that's doing that work for us. And she's doing just incredible work, uh, with Deirdre in terms of all the backend grant work and the drawdowns and the grant, uh, reporting on the fiscal side. We have the content of the grants covered. It's really helping with the fiscal piece of it. And so if you look at each of the positions, we're talking about a director of finance and operations for a hundred and twenty thousand, a part-time clerk for twenty thousand, um, and then grants management for six thousand, five hundred. Uh, and again, the fifteen thousand dollars that we used from that assistant soup salary for the lead coach, I wanted to keep that in, in the mix. So the, uh, school year 21, 22 design was a total of one hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred dollars. With what we are proposing for school year 23, 24, the total is one hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Actually, it comes at a cost savings.
Is that including the fifteen thousand that we already?
Yes, it does.
I thought so. I'm, I'm, I'm new math and old math at. The grants management piece, is that a stipend or is it a, it's not a new?
We did it as an hourly rate in terms of what we think. And Deirdre, do you want to, I know you wanted to add a couple of pieces to that.
Um, just to, to add a few things, um, when, when I first started, Jason and I were talking about capacity. We talk a lot about capacity with professional development for teachers aligned with curriculum. We heard about it tonight. And so when we were talking capacity, when I first arrived, just taking a look at the business office, taking a look at the structures in place and seeing what people needed for training, for professional development. I, I, I took a little different look at it after a particular point in time. This is more of infrastructure change. So by putting a few pieces into place, putting a couple of cogs in a wheel, if you will, it's going to turn much more efficiently. The timing component of your reporting is going to improve dramatically uh, as well as your ability to, uh, work, uh, more timely, I think, with your auditors in particular. I do have to apologize to the school committee. Um, I did engage your auditors for that second audit without the appropriation. When I saw the auditors in the house and I saw them auditing a previous year, they were a year behind what they should have been auditing. And I was so excited to see them. So yes, I did engage them. So I do apologize for the school committee.
We are caught up now.
You're caught up. This alone in regards to the infrastructure, the two years audits that you're doing, the findings that we're asking them for, we're not shy about asking them for me. Write me up. Tell me what I need to do. We have seven months. We want to do it. We are going to build this. And we're going to put it all into place so that to some extent, to some extent, if the position turns itself over, your positions are in place, your system. place, your systems are organized, they're running, they might slow down a little bit, we'll get someone else on board and it will run. So the infrastructure has been built for the purposes of building capacity. But now that this is in place or will be in place, you should be able to really pick up some speed, which I think is really a, a very good opportunity for you.
So there are two pieces. One is the reorganization and then one is the actual job description for.
Right. So I think we need to approve the job description for director of finance and operations because that is new to us.
Yes.
And then we would be able to approve the reorganization, which will be for our 23, 24 budget year. But what this does is allows us to post at, you know, prime time for, for attracting the candidate for the director of finance and operations. So looking for a motion to approve the job description as presented for director of finance and operations?
So moved.
Motion made by Tara. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ted. Any questions about the job description or?
If it's helpful, I took the, we took and reviewed certainly your assistant superintendent job description. We wanted to make sure that if we were pulling, we had places. We took a look at the interim school business officials position and we started going out on school spring to look at everything and anything in Massachusetts that was posted in the last six months, what was reposted because of failed searches, what positioned certain districts kind of stripped out. And then I, we started pulling some tactical needs for BMR and kind of created this.
And we're going to find, the, the, the right person's going to find us.
Yes, after we take them from somewhere.
That's how we, that's our luck.
Yes, we, we have, we have plans.
We're going to attract that person. We're excited to have you. You don't know it yet. All right. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's unanimous. And then a motion to approve the business office reorganization with the positions and salary ranges listed here. Looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dan and second by Carrie. And I already asked my question. So any other questions for? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you.
That's great. Now we can get chopping the job description around and get to work. Thank you so much for that.
Put it out there.
Yes, and that concludes my report.
All right. And actually, if it's okay with everyone, I'll just circle back around to public forum just so I don't forget to do it. Is there anyone here that wanted to address us publicly that isn't on the agenda?
I just like the way you did that. Now the room is empty.
It wouldn't have hurt me. Just so we're all on the same page. Carrie, there were at least 100 people in this room at the beginning of the meeting.
That's amazing to finally.
And that's recognition. It was a very nice crowd. So we should have had a VIP section, though, for the kids. They could not find their way up because it was so crowded.
Stepping over each other.
Yep. All right. So moving on to facilities. For waiting out.
No problem.
All of the excitement we had here.
It was very educational and entertaining. I just have a few updates mostly, but so for the high school, we're still waiting for Industrial Boiler to schedule their technicians to come out. But in the meantime, as a district, we filed for a grant through MYA, our insurance company, which could cover up to $10,000 worth of the repairs needed. I think the total bill was a lot of, 11,000.
Wait, did you say high school?
The high school, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that total bill was like 11,500. So that'll cover most of the repairs. Had the custodial staff gather bleachers from other schools around the middle school, the elementary school, Millville School, and bring them up to the track for the remainder of the football season. As you know, we got the big Thanksgiving Day game here this year. So it's extra seating up there. The softball field, the softball field mix is to be delivered tomorrow, weather providing, which looks good. And so just an update on the middle school, the new VFD drive came in and it was damaged. Our electrician installed it and it never powered up. So we sent it back and we're waiting to get a new one. It's proven to be difficult to find. In the meantime, I'm reaching out to Automatic Logic, which installed the system when the school was built, to see, to get a quote from them as well. As I explained last school committee meeting, that controls the whole computer system to bring the heat up for the building. So in the meantime, we can manually control the building, but that is part of the brains of the building. And let's see, for JFK AF Maloney, the processed wood chips have been delivered for the AFM Playground, and we had a custodian install it this week and that's great. That looks great.
It does, yeah. It's really nice.
Makes a big difference. The Millville Elementary School, the wood chips have been delivered for both playgrounds and that work should be completed this weekend.
Including moving the peystone?
Be moving the peystone.
From the preschool.
Yes.
Very good. The weather looks good for the.
Yeah, it will. Yep. And then if we can just clean up around the fence, too, where all the peestones, you know, spilled over and get the grass growing nice again. And that'll look great. We are gonna take the sandbox out in the meantime, then put it back and put some new fresh sand in it. And we're gonna put a, a barrier between the wood chips and the sand. This way, if the kids dig too deep, they're not gonna get the, the wood chips in there, nice, fresh, new sand.
Perfect. Sounds like a plan.
Pretty much, yeah.
Thank you for that update.
Yeah, welcome.
And we do have use of facilities. We had one in our packet and one that came after the packets were delivered. So we have the Hartnett PTO for their meeting. That's.
Yes, still a couple of the same parts.
Oh, sorry. These are all stapled together. There's many more.
Yeah, there's a few here.
So they need the conference room. And then we have the dance company. Do we have a hydraulic lift?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they use it for the lights.
Yeah.
She uses it every year.
I think she always puts in for that.
Yep.
So they have their recital weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, December 1st through the 4th.
Nope.
And the fee is on.
Eight through the 11th?
Eight through the 11th, yes.
Is it, is it different on your form?
That sheet, it says the 1st through the 4th.
Oh, the written form, 8 through 11.
Oh, we should make sure that.
Confirm the dates of.
We have the right dates.
I'll double check the dates.
In case there's school events. So should we wait on it?
If we, I, I think we just check the calendar because I don't think those dates would work if they're, I think it's one of, you know what I'm saying?
If you want to approve it, we'll, we'll check the dates with her and then.
If the date will approve it as.
Yeah. What's on the application?
And then we do have another one for PTO for tomorrow night. I've been seeing this on.
Yep.
It's a seventh grade flow event, I think.
Yep.
Perfect. And the one that is added in.
The fees sheet says eight, nine, 10, 11. The only one that's different is the handwritten one.
The handwritten one, yeah. I think it's the one that's recorded on the actual sheets. Yep.
I don't. I think it's the first.
Okay.
It's the first weekend. I'm sorry.
Oh, you did? So she put the wrong dates on everything? Okay.
And then we do have a COVID clinic for this Saturday request by the Town of Blackstone Department of Health to be held at the middle school. Do we have a custodian here inside of that?
There will be.
All right. So why don't we separate the dance company and I'll take a motion on the, the PTO, the Board of Health.
PTO.
We'll make sure that we're doing that later. All right. So we have two PTOs. One is for their meetings Tuesdays through June on certain selected dates. The PTO for this Friday night and then the Board of Health for Saturday. Looking for a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Motion made by Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
And second by Carrie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. And then a motion to approve the dance company to use the high school facility, which includes the cafeteria, the auditorium, teacher's cafe. So it's just a lot of space. We need to double check the dates and make sure that we have availability. It could be December 1st through the 4th, or December 8th through the 11th, or maybe they want all four, all, all eight and times two on the fee. So all those in favor, or sorry, looking for a motion to approve if the dates allow the facility for the dance company?
So moved.
Motion made by Carrie, second by Tara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous. You don't have to get back to us. Just let, just let them know what dates they have. School committee forum. Anyone have any exciting news for us?
I'll congratulate the field hockey team and their exciting win for their final game of the season. It went into double overtime and ended in a shootout.
And you're still here.
And that I made it here. Yes, it was. And one of our seniors who, it was her last game tonight and she scored one of the goals in the shootout. So that was, it was fabulous.
What was this for?
It was one to one tied when we went into overtime. And then we ended up, we got two of our goals in during the shootout where.
Awesome.
The Bromfield School only got one. So our goalie had a standout performance. She was amazing. The girls, they gave it their all. It was a fabulous game tonight. So great way to end their season.
Congratulations.
Very exciting.
Just, I have one for next week. We have a PD day on the 4th. Our calendar, I guess, has proposed. I don't know if we can just clean up the calendar that's online.
Wait, there's no school on November 4th?
Correct. Or the 11th, because there's a lot of like days off coming up.
Oh, where does it say proposed?
On the.
The actual, the day or on the calendar?
It's green on the calendar, like the month, but then when it's in writing, it says November 4th, proposed PD day. So I think it just wasn't.
And we approved that.
We already approved it, yeah.
Yes. Hmm, okay.
And I just looked at the printed copy I have. So it may have already been cleaned up online. I don't think it is, but just, I guess, to confirm.
Got it. Thank you. We will do that.
Thank you.
And then I'm not sure what the final date is on the pumpkin contest in Millville, but that giant pumpkin that's sitting out there in front of everything. I guess there's some awards to be had.
The week?
Yeah. Actually, I'm glad you said that because I was like, I thought it was the second thing I wanted to ask. I know we said papers were going home for the kids to guess, but I know middle school, at least sixth grade, have, have not received anything yet. So I'm not sure how it's really being coordinated to get the guesses in. Yeah.
We got confirmation from each school that they went out, so I'll find out.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, unless mine might just be missing his. assures me he's received nothing.
Pumpkin.
It's a, it's a paper. It's not a Google form for the older kids.
Did you get one?
Because that might not happen. I'm just saying.
Right.
They will fill out a Google form when it's sent to their classroom, but I don't know. Like, when's the last time they brought any paper home? Elementary, I would say.
Do you know if, did you get one of elementary? I didn't look in his backpack yet today, but I haven't, not this week, today.
Yeah. We need to make sure that those are.
Just because there are some good prizes. It's, it's only just a town member doing it. She's doing 100, $100, I think, savings bonds for each grade level, elementary, middle and high school.
And we could make a Google Doc in a day, so.
Or does she want the paper?
I think the Google Doc will be fine because you can just forward her the form answers and she picks the person with the right weight.
Anything else, Erin, that you were?
No, I just, I, I talked to the woman today because she's gonna let me take some seeds out of it. Oh, what's all that?
I would love to see those seeds.
I want to plant them. We did a pumpkin patch in my yard this past year.
Imagine.
But they were with the little sugar pumpkins from the Blackstone Fair. So we only got three or four sugar pumpkins. And the kids were like, here's the big jack-o'-lantern. We gotta, we gotta get a big one and plant the seeds.
That's a big one. You don't know what you're going to end up with.
Is that, is that the theory?
I think, but I'm not sure. Well, I guess we'll find out.
Find out, let us know.
And I will just remind everyone that our student rep talked about it like three hours ago, but the band does have a very big weekend. We have New England State Championships on Saturday night and then Nesba Championship on Sunday night. And then before our next meeting is their national championship in New York, at MetLife Stadium in New Jersey, actually. So we wish them well, safe travels. On our next agenda, we will, we did, I'll just say, we did not put on the agenda to announce Jason's contract, but we did negotiate with Jason and we will announce that at our next meeting publicly when we put it on the agenda. And are we moving into?
Yes, we are.
Okay. So our next school committee meeting is November 17, 6 p.m. And we will adjourn this meeting in executive session. So we're going to roll call into executive session, not to return to public. Erin?
Erin.
Tara?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, Harry.
Ted?
Yes.